This conference will now be recorded.
We're going to ask that everyone hold their comments or questions until the end. We will, Eric, Joel and I are committed to staying on until 8 o'clock Eastern to answer questions. So if we do consume the full hour in terms of prepared comments, we will take that time to hear you out and try to answer questions. For tonight's meeting, we are going to be recording this. It will be posted on the website, but the slide content and the recording, so it will be there for anyone that you wish to have access it, they'll be able to hear what was said. And then, so for tonight, the content, you can hear from three people. Myself, I'm John Stacy, President of Florida U Soccer. Joel Dragan, the Executive Director of Florida U Soccer. And then Eric Idle is our Treasurer for Florida U Soccer. So, so in the interest of time, we're going to jump right into the first of several decisions that have been made by the Board. So first up, we're going to talk about return to play. So last night, go ahead and do next slide, Joel. So last night, the Board met for over two hours to deal with a number of topics, most of which will be talked about tonight. We've, we have for the last month and a half, it seems, every couple of weeks, we'll meet and we'll push the date further. Realizing that's very frustrating, it's frustrating for you, the members, it's frustrating for us as a Board, we don't have certainty. We are, as all of you are aware, the state of Florida is currently in Phase One of a return to normalcy plan, all but three counties, right? So the southernmost counties, I guess Miami Dade, Broward, and probably I think Palm Beach remain in the zero phase at this point. But 64 of the counties are in Phase One. And we've been reviewing the documents, several of the Board members have been, you know, monitoring the news, gathering information from national sources, from local sources, reading everything we can to understand what these phases look like and what the phased approach looks like. The Board decided last night that we believe that soccer, in a return to soccer in some fashion on the field, fits best in Phase Three. And so what we've decided to do is establish and to make, so that you have some clarity, is that we will begin our return to the field on the same date that Phase Three is enacted. So at this point in time, there's supposed to be approximately two weeks, or actually two weeks, between Phase One, Two, and Phase Two and Three. So on the date that Phase Three starts, if that ends up being, say, June 1st, then we are, then clubs would be permitted to allow players back on the field for practice activities. That will be the only sanctioned activity that FYSA will cover during that time period. There will be a two-week window. At the end of that two weeks, the presumption is that we would then be at the end of the first two weeks of Phase Three and ready to go to normalcy. And at that point, we would allow for the opening of, for additional things to include tryouts, league play, and even tournament play. You'll find out here soon that we are canceling our cup events. So the state will not be offering any additional events, but we will give freedom to those clubs, tournament organizations, and league organizations that choose in response to whatever their league members wish to do, or whatever their local clubs wish to do, they can offer these products, presumably starting two weeks after Phase Three. So this is the, and Joel, I need to, at the bottom, it blacks out, or it blocks what's on the very bottom there. But just know that the guidance does apply to all sanctioned activities. And so that, again, that two-week period will be practice only, no games, no league play, no tournaments. That's only practice. And again, we want to allow time, we understand that not all localities are going to make the same decision to open it up, you know, exactly on that same day. So we hope over that first two weeks leading up to a potential date for tryouts, that that would give those local authorities the opportunity to evaluate and to give the green light to local clubs. Next slide. So that really leads us into the questions that we've been receiving around tryouts. So the Board made some, discussed this last night, and we've made the following determinations that prior to May 18th, affiliates can only roster, offer roster spots for the 2020-21 seasonal year to those players that are already registered with their club for this year. That is not a change from our practice. May 18th was the announced trial date, that was the date following the full completion of Round of 16. For State Cup, it was the intended date, so it aligns with what our rules were. So the Board is expecting that nobody will be offering spots to anyone other than members of their own club until May 18th. On May 18th, affiliates would then be permitted to begin to contact and offer roster spots to players from any, regardless of this year's status. Again, this aligns with the ability that a player would have to attend in-person tryouts if we were allowed to have them. And so those contacts are permitted. And from there to May 18th until June 10th, organizations will have the opportunity to make those offers, to enter into contracts. The contracts themselves, by rule, do not become effective until June 10th. That's the first date that organizations are allowed to register their players with FYSA, and that is by Rule 203.1, the date on which all contracts become binding. Our rule also states that if there's a question as to the refundability of fees, it is based on the agreement between the parties. So, you know, if you're a club and you have a non-refundable fee and your parent signs it, that is between you two. FYSA will not adjudicate those. We are not involved in the discussion around the refundability. And again, that's based on the rules, the rules that we have in place. Next slide, Joel. So this is Rule 203.1, wanted to show it to you, just in case there was any question. So this is when you register the players on June 10th. Prior to that, the agreements can be revoked. Next slide. This is the trial rule, there will be, there is no change. So there were several things that the Board discussed. We've been, we have got, received questions about not in good standing. We've received questions, you know, around the poaching rule. And we tried to address that with the prior statements regarding the May 18th. The not in good standing procedures and timelines will stay the same. Clubs have until 5:00 PM on the Friday before Memorial Day. This year, that falls on Friday, May 22nd at 5:00 PM. You, there are specific, in the rule, there are specific guidelines as to what has to be submitted by the club, and there are procedures that are in place. So nothing changes in regards to not in good standing. Clubs still have to make that determination and file with FYSA in a timely manner. Next slide. Registration timeline, so we're not going to change, we're not making any changes to the, to the June 10th timeframe. Yes, tryouts may be pushed to June 15th if everything goes to plan. But you don't have to start registering on June 10th, you certainly can wait beyond that. But, you know, based on our rules, any contract that you sign on June 10th becomes effective whether or not you register with, register that player. So you do have some protection there. And then also reaffiliation requirements and timelines. So organizations that choose to re-affiliate will still follow the same calendar and do everything that we've done in the past, there's no changes. It's also, there's no change to the, to the background check switch that will occur on July 1st, when folks will start to be able to apply or do the background checks for the upcoming year. Next, Joel. All right, so I'm going to, I'll just make the comment first before I hand it over to Joel, is that the Board did decide last night that all of our competitions, State Cup, President's Cup, Futures Cup, and Commissioners Cup competitions would not continue for any or in all age groups. And then USYS has also already, had already canceled their regional and national events. And so I'm going to turn it over to Joel to talk about what that looks like for our clubs in terms of refund of fees. Take it away, Joel.
Thanks, John. Yeah, absolutely. The Board voted just last night, after a lot of debate and a couple of former pushbacks of making the decision that we will cancel these four tournaments that we have listed here that are all state-sponsored. Like to mention also that this doesn't necessarily apply to sanctioned tournaments or affiliate tournaments that we have out there. Once they, once we progress beyond, the two weeks beyond Phase Three, as John mentioned before, those affiliated tournaments can take place. Starting with State Cup, so I guess in general, before we get into this, I'd like to mention that all of this information will be posted to the website, this slide deck, as well as separate memos that will go out to clubs and teams about this. So you don't need to write feverishly, you'll receive this information in a number of different ways. But every tournament was in a different place when you look at State Cup, President's Cup, Futures, and Commissioners Cup. So there is different refund or credit opportunities for each one. So I'll go through each tournament individually. Starting with State Cup, the 2020 registration fee was obviously $900. You'll see this theme throughout many of the Cups, in that teams will have the option of a partial refund or a full credit for the event next year. You can see here that this does include, specific to State Cup, the 18 and 19 teams, they did participate in the fall of 2019. So all of those teams will not be receiving a refund, unfortunately. The, there will be an online team form submission, which will be available tomorrow. I'll get into how you can access that form, because we're going to have each team request make a decision on if they want a partial refund, or if they want a credit for next year. So first, talking about the credit, specific to State Cup. First, it's been posted on our website, but the State Cup fee is going up next year due to the costs that it will, that we'll incur for sending teams to regionals. The regional fee increased, so our State Cup fee has to as well. The 2021 State Cup fee will be $925. You'll note that you'll get a full credit toward next year's State Cup. So you're getting a little bit more. If the teams elect to take a credit for next year, they will receive a full credit, they won't have to pay for the extra $25. The credit will be issued in GOT Soccer as a voucher sent to the club. So the club will manage these vouchers, will send it to them, so they won't necessarily have to use it for the team that they got the credit for. If they would prefer to opt for a refund, there will be an $800 refund, again, sent directly to the clubs. FYSA is going to deal with the clubs directly on this, rather than refunding the individual credit cards. Again, I'll get into some of the nuts and bolts on this later, but again, if you want a refund for State Cup, it's $800 sent directly to the club. And that $800 is less our incurred costs for things like credit card processing, awards and gifts, admin fees, that took place in order to plan the tournament. Full credit, if you take it, refund less $100 for State Cup. President's Cup refund, we'll just go through the same process. The entry fee for this year was $750. Again, President's Cup was a little bit more complicated, because different teams were at different places of the tournament, depending on how many teams were in an individual bracket. If there were more than 32 teams in a bracket, they had to start in Round One. If there were less than 32 teams, they went on directly into Round Two. And some teams played into Round Two, some didn't. So this one, we had to take a slightly different approach. Teams remaining in the competition will have the option for a partial refund for, or a credit for 2021 President's Cup. I put an asterisk next to it, because it's not all teams. You'll notice teams who have been eliminated from the competition will not be offered a refund. Again, there will be an online individual team form submission that will be available tomorrow for teams to give their choice. They'll have the choice between a credit, a full credit for 2021 President's Cup, or a refund, a partial refund. Now, the full credit will be a little bit different, depending on where these teams were within the competition. This can get a little confusing. Again, we will send it out to everybody, this exact text most likely, to teams in the coming days, so they can see it. The credit, if they opt to take it, will be a full credit if the teams have not played any games in the competition. That will be a full credit for $850, which you'll note is what the President's Cup team fee is going up to next year. If the teams had played any games in the competition, we had some teams that had played one game, some that had played two, some that had played three, the credit for next year's competition will be $650. If they had played any games yet, the credit is $650. Again, as with State Cup, the credit will be issued in GOT Soccer, it'll be a voucher sent directly to the club, applicable for any team within that club for next year's registration. If they should opt for a refund, again, seeing that teams were in different places within the tournament, there will be two refund options. $650 will go to teams who had played no games. $600 will go to teams who had played any games. And again, this is less the incurred costs from FYSA for credit card processing, awards, gifts, and admin fees that we had put into, certainly more fees here that we had, since we had started the tournament. Futures Cup, the 2020 Futures Cup registration fee was $225. Futures Cup won't be offered in 2021, so there are no forms to submit, and there are no credits that will be offered in the future. All teams will receive automatically a $200 refund that will be sent directly to the clubs. And again, that's just less $25 for incurred costs and credit card processing and so on. Lastly, Commissioners Cup. Commissioners Cup in Regions A, B, and C were, again, challenging, given that they were at different places throughout the tournament. The 2020 registration fee for Commissioners Cup was $400. What I'm going to read below only applies to teams in Regions A and B. Region C had made it to the semifinals or finals for everybody. So there will be no refunds for teams eliminated or teams that participated in the Region C Commissioners Cup. And the refunds will be given to teams who had no games played, or they will have the option to receive a partial refund. So again, there will be a form to submit, I'll get onto the forms in the next slide, but they will have the option of a full credit for next year's Commissioners Cup 2021, if they played zero games. Again, credit given back in GOT Soccer via voucher. If they should opt for a refund, $350, less $50 in incurred cost. That only applies to teams who had played no games in the Commissioners Cup. And we actually went ahead and looked at it, there were four teams in Region B who had played no games, and there were 44 teams, I believe, in Region A who had played no games. Getting into, I guess, the nuts and bolts on how these refunds are going to work, all refunds are going to be issued in the form of a check sent directly to the club, again, if they should opt for a refund. Credits are an option, and credits are advantageous, at least for President's Cup and State Cup, given the fee increase. You could save some money for your club next year. We're going to need to ensure that we have your correct mailing address. We've got some steps that are in place, that before we actually submit it, we will reach out to your agent of record to confirm that we have the correct email address. We really want to minimize the total checks that we're sending out, so the idea is to only send one check per competition, per club. So if you could help us in this process by ensuring that your teams fill out this online process, this online submission via GOT Soccer, that'd be very helpful. Please try to have some patience with us as we go through this. The Board of Directors approved last night was over $400,000 in refunds, there's going to be a lot that goes along with it. As I've mentioned, this online team submission will be available tomorrow, it'll be posted on the website, as well as emailed directly to the teams. If your team was involved in President's Cup, State Cup, or Commissioners Cup, you will receive an automatic email that goes to the coach or manager of the team. We ask that you fill it out promptly, we'd like to get this handled as quickly as you guys would. It's going to be a GOT Soccer form, where they will need their team login. So some of the teams may need to contact you as the club, hopefully not if they're going to tournaments to obtain their username and password. We're asking for the team login, simply so that we can track these teams. When you log in by team, we can see exactly what team account it was, so there will be no discrepancy in what team gets a refund, what team gets a credit, so on and so forth. So the form will be available tomorrow, and we're asking that all teams have the form submitted by May 25th at midnight. Realize that is Memorial Day weekend, it gives you guys the long weekend, a few weeks to get it submitted. And again, the form is very simple, I've taken a look at it, it will be available tomorrow. Five to 10 questions about your team and what option that they want to do. So it should not take more than a couple of minutes, once they get logged in there. Again, we'll have that link posted on the individual competitions webpages, and also sent directly to the teams. What we do want to note here is that ultimately, with as many teams as we're talking about, there will be some who don't submit the form. The Board determined last night, for those who don't submit it, the default option is going to be a credit for next year's competition. But we're asking everybody, this final point here, to fill out the form regardless. That will just help us in our processing, to know that these teams want a credit for next year. We're going to have a master sheet of all the teams, and frankly, until we hear from all of the teams within a club, within a competition, we're going to hold off on processing that payment, so on processing the refund. So please, try to get your teams to do it quickly, the quicker all the teams do it, the quicker that we can plan, and the quicker that we could process a potential refund. You'll be hearing from us quite a bit on the refunds. And with that, I'll turn it over to our Treasurer, Eric, who will speak to the fee increase.
Thanks, Joel. And just one thing to add on the prior slide, right, where we said we're sending checks to the clubs. So there will be no option for refunds to credit cards, and Joel already said that. But just to put a little more color around that, right, every time we accept a payment or process a refund via credit cards, we pay a percentage out. So given the scope of what we're going to be paying out and refunding, it's not prudent for us to spend any more money than possible, right? Because ultimately, that's your money. And so we're going to do it by check. And the other reason for that is if we refund it to the credit card it was paid on, if it's paid on a, you know, a credit card for a team manager, like Suzie's mom, right, if she then steals that money, there's no recourse against her, right? But if we send it to the club, there's rules, we know who all of you guys are, you've been background checked, and it's just another control there. Also, practically speaking, if I issue an $800 refund to your credit card, how do you then give that out in cash, if you're going to divvy it up to the member, the families on your team, right? So if you're going to split that between 18 people, that means you've got to come up with $800 cash before you eventually spend that on your credit card and offset it. So just to go on to the fee increase, so the Board of Directors did vote last Friday to increase the fees. So the recreational fee for the coming season will be $13 per player, and $25 per player for competitive players. You can see those increases, it's $3 per player increase for rec, and $4 for competitive. There's no change to the background check, so we're not doing anything there. Our costs didn't go up there, right? So the only reason we're increasing these, as you'll see a bit more in the next slide or two, is because of the insurance increase. So some of you might recall that we mentioned last year's AGM, that after May 1st of 2019, we received an insurance premium increase. And remember, we have to set our registration fees by May 1st each year. So we weren't able to pass that on, and we absorbed that for you. So what you're seeing here in those $3 and $4 is exactly what I said at the AGM last year, right? One of the questions that was brought up was, what do you think the increase will be for us? And I said, assuming no further increase, it'll be between $3 and $4. So we've held true to that, we're passing on that cost. It was a little over $300,000, that the insurance premium increase that we paid this year, and there is no reason to expect that it will go below that value in this coming year. And we'll talk a bit more about that. So why, why are we increasing, right? And why did our premium go up this past year, and will likely go up again even further this year? So we've had increased general liability claims. And I say claims, that's plural, right? So there is not a single club that is to blame for these. So there may be certain instances that you hear about that are publicized a bit more than others, but there are numerous clubs that have had issues with coaches or different things. And they range from everything, from sexual assault, to fights on the field, and just general claims history. And that's what SAM is, so that's sexual abuse and molestation. Yes, there have been multiple SAM cases in the state of Florida that involve FYSA and our member clubs. And again, I say clubs, it is not a specific club's fault. They've been very costly, there's changes in the insurance market, right? So we've all seen everything that goes on with USA Gymnastics, with the Boy Scouts, with many organizations, right? So insurance companies are paying out large claims for a multitude of reasons involving youth organizations. And just like when they pay out for your hurricane damage, or for your car accident, they then increase your rate or drop you, right? So in this case, they're increasing our rate. Also, the, just the general legal climate in the state of Florida, right? So if you know about insurance generally, in Florida, it's a lot more expensive for things like car insurance. Why is that? Because it is so easy to file civil lawsuits in Florida, and you have so many attorneys out there, one of which is me, so I feel able to criticize them. You know, it's those ambulance chaser type that you hear about, and they do, they file claims because they're easy to do and they're cheap, and they can write one single letter and they can make a minimum of $10,000, and it took them one hour to do that work. So it has to do with us specifically at FYSA, but it also has to do with just the general legal climate and our society as a whole, not just in the state of Florida. So what grants the authority and the rules around these costs? So Rule 301.2 talks about fixed costs and administrative costs. So fixed costs are made up of things like you see below, which is the fee that we pay to the United States Soccer Federation, and the fee that we're required to pay to the United States Youth Soccer Association, and those are $1 and $2.25 respectively, and that also includes our insurance premiums. Everything else is considered an administrative cost. And Joel, if you wouldn't mind going to the next slide. So as you'll see from the rule, the fixed costs the Board sets every year by May 1st, which we did, the administrative costs, if we were to increase those, and there's no proposed increase on those this year, or planned for any future years, have to be set at the AGM, they're voted on by all of you, our members, and they don't take effect until a year passes, right? So the fixed costs, though, we pass on by May 1st, and the Board sets those. And that's just a copy of the rule there. If you wouldn't mind going to the next slide. Thank you, Joel. So I talked a little bit about insurance, right? So you'll see kind of in the middle of the page, our 2019 total premium increase, that's this year, what we're living with right now, was $330, a little bit north of that $1,000, right? So FYSA did not pass that on, we absorbed it. So you can see pretty easily, right, where did we come up with that $3 and $4 per player increase? Well, we had roughly 95,000 players this year, so if you just round that to 100,000 for some easy math, that's a little more than $3 per player, right? So clearly, the only thing we, that insurance increase that we had last year. But if we go back up to the top of the slide, we've been advised that this year, we will have a 100% premium increase. That does not mean a 100% of the $300,000 increase we had last year. That means a 100% premium increase of the total paid last year, which was $700,000. Now, that may not end up being a $1,000 this coming year, because we expect to register less players as a result of COVID-19. We think there's going to be some people that have financial hardship, frankly, cannot afford to play soccer next season. So we're expecting fewer players, which is why you see the very bottom bullet on it, that our anticipated 2020 premium increase is somewhere north of $400,000. And that is probably, you know, that's strictly an estimate based on us. And that is probably, you know, that's strictly an estimate based on us. You know, as you'll see going up to the first sub bowl, we will not know what our quote is until 30 to 60 days before our players. And the reason for that is with all these claims that multiple youth organizations are having, insurance carriers are not comfortable giving a quote out very far ahead of the renewal. Just like your car insurance renewal isn't going to, they're not going to tell you six months ahead of time, right? They wait a little closer to see if you have another accident before they decide what your bill will be for the next term. And so our insurance company is doing the same thing. So really, we don't exactly what the number will be down to the penny, but we are expecting 100% premium increase. And that is because of the claim history and just the general climate with youth organizations. It is based on player estimates. Kind of touched on that already, but just explicitly to say it, we do think the player numbers will be down a little bit due to COVID-19. And so that's why you see that adjusted number there. If you look at our insurance premium increase, you can see year over year what it was. So last season, 1819, it was 421. This year, it's 685. But there was nothing built into what you paid this year that covered 685. What you paid only covered 421. So FYSA absorbed that full increase for you, which was $330,000. Additionally, you may recall that last year we raised our player registration fees by $1 across the board. That was to cover a United States Youth Soccer increase of $1.25 per player. So we also absorbed 25 cents per player that same year. That we did know about and that was a conscious decision to do that. And we're not recouping that extra 25 cents this coming year either. And Joel, if you could go to the next slide.
Just to add on to that, I'd like to say in my conversations with other state associations as well as the experience I've seen in other states, that this isn't exclusively a Florida issue. While some of the issues that Eric touched on earlier, our claims history, the legal climate here in Florida, all states are going through a difficult time with trying to obtain a re, a new quote for this year to obtain the same insurance. There's some thought out there that almost no one is going to be given the same type of coverage that they had previously because of those sexual abuse and molestation charges. It's not exclusive here to Florida. So while it is potentially worse, there's a lot of states who are dealing with the same issues that we are right now. So to combat all of this, FYSA has taken what I would feel are some very proactive steps in this, in this to combat our rising insurance premium. First of all, what people ask us all the time is, you know, what insurance company are you using? How come the rates are so high? Well, we have facilitated, continuing to work on facilitating multiple quotes and exploring a lot of different options in the marketplace right now. It's just difficult. There is one broker that's out there, K&amp;K Insurance. I'm sure many of you have heard of them, who are really the industry leader in this and who insures, I believe it's 50 to 53 of the 55 state associations. It's almost all of them out there. So we're exploring a lot of different options also with our account manager here locally as well. So we've also met with USYS. We are bound by USYS policy, their risk management policy, to carry a certain amount of liability coverage. We're meeting with them to ask if there would be any type of flexibility in that. We never want to carry less insurance, but we're balancing that with what our premiums are going to be going forward. To combat the problems that we've been having and the claims, we've transitioned, as I'm sure many of you know, to a new background check provider, JDP or JD Palantyne. Much more thorough background check than we had previously done. Hits on some places that we previously didn't and should ultimately identify, help identify people who were, who shouldn't be working with our members. We've now mandated international background checks. International being people who aren't a citizen or who don't have a social security number. We are now having them do background checks from their country of citizenship. So that's been a major, major thing that we've added to our repertoire of background checking, also through JDP. You'll be seeing a lot more of this coming out, but just recently, last month, FYSA has committed to a relationship with Presidium. Presidium is really the industry leader in abuse prevention and protection of youth, youth participants. And I say that purposely because their scope is well beyond soccer. They've worked with the Boy Scouts of America. They have worked with soccer organizations, other state associations that are out there. They've worked with USA Swimming, a number of different youth-serving organizations. So we are really excited to embrace their pathway to accreditation, they call it. In the insurance business, in the youth-serving market, the Presidium accreditation means an awful lot. They come in, they review our policies, they recommend changes, they help us implement changes, they do individual trainings if they need it. FYSA is committed to this and it's not going to be an easy process. You guys will be hearing about Presidium and some of the new policies that we are putting in place because of our relationship with them. And Eric is going to talk a little bit on administrative costs and controls.
Yeah, so you know, the things that we've touched on so far as far as refunds for the competitions and then also the fee increase and the substantial insurance increase, right? So if you add all of that up, right? It's a substantial financial consequence to FYSA, right? Some were estimated for the insurance about $400,000 and probably more than $400,000 for the competition refunds. And both of those are the right thing to do, right? So while we're having financial impact, so are all of you and so are all of the families. And so the thought is the more we can absorb of that and keep the impact low, that's really our goal, right? So even though we're expecting numbers to go down a bit, we want to keep as many people playing and make it as affordable as possible. And so that's really our goal, right? And we're behind that. We're putting our money where our mouth is to the tune of nearly a million dollars, right? So I think the board is firmly committed to making sure we do that. And another step in that process, aside from, you know, strategically using reserves, which again is all of your money, it's the money from our organizations, we're also cutting costs, right? So a few years ago, we implemented a robust financial policies and procedures. It included all of our reimbursements as well as even limits and caps on meals and things like that. So at the direction of John, we've taken a look at those. And last Friday, we voted in an update, our first update in about two years, and we slashed those even further, right? So we made, added in prohibitions for things like alcohol. We cut the amount that any of the meals are capped at to even lower values. And believe me, they were not outrageous to begin with. And so you know, you can rest assured that the sorts of things that your families are doing are the sorts of things that we'll be doing. So we're tightening our belt. We've also reduced our mileage reimbursements and a number of different things. So we're doing our part, not only by absorbing some of these costs, but also by trying to reduce the cost that we have between all of our volunteers and staff. And John or Joel, I don't know if there's any other specific cuts that you want to speak to, but those are really the big ones. And we took a comprehensive look at it and we're really trying to cut costs wherever we can.
Just to tag on Eric, you know, in addition to the financial policies, we have several of our board members will be working with the staff to evaluate some programs, look at our both revenues and expenses for those programs and seek to essentially balance things out. We, you know, we very much feel like that there are opportunities for us to bring our administrative costs down. We have, we are a blessed organization. We have been fortunate to have reserves. And we continue to have reserves. We did take, you know, we have investments. And as everybody out there, if you have an investment account, you've taken a hit through the market. We have as well. But we still stand, stand in a position to be able to support, both support these refunds, support absorbing these, these costs that we think are coming, the additional cost for the insurance this, that will come out this summer. But we also are not going to just, we're not looking to seek to close the budget gap on the backs of our members. We are looking at anything and everything. The board will be meeting on May 30th and we will be evaluating some ideas, some plans that will be put in place. So on that note, I'd like to go to the last slide before we open it up to questions. And this really does talk about kind of the future. So, oh, I'm sorry.
A couple of insurance notes here.
Go ahead, Joel, sorry.
Actually, I think Eric's going to start with this one. Go ahead.
Yeah, so a little bit about the insurance, right? So we walked through what our return to play plan looks like, right? It starts with practices and then opens up to tryouts, games and a more normal feeling sort of thing. But things to keep in mind, right? While we're during the suspension, there are no insurance policies covering you, right? So if you choose to ignore the suspension and you go out and start playing tomorrow and someone is injured, our insurance will absolutely not cover that, right? That will rest solely on you. So it's important that you follow these things. They are not recommendations. They are absolutely mandates and our insurance will not cover them as a result of that. So something to understand, our participant accident insurance, think of it like the secondary medical coverage, it does not apply to illnesses or infectious disease, right? So that's the insurance that if you normally break your leg or tear your ACL, anything like that, and you don't have medical insurance, right? The family doesn't have medical insurance or needs additional medical coverage, you submit a form to our office, it goes through our insurance carrier and we cover that for you. That does not apply to infectious diseases, which would include COVID-19. The FYSA general liability policy provides club liability coverage for bodily injury, which does include bodily injury, sickness, or disease. And so it does not contain a communicable disease exclusion, which means there is coverage there. But the crucial thing to understand here is it is not the same as our accident coverage. A player cannot just file a claim through our office to have their medical bill covered under the general liability policy, right? It only covers club or FYSA liability. So what does that mean practically speaking? That means if a player alleges that someone is negligent or some other legal theory and that is what caused them to get COVID-19, this would cover that sort of situation. But it does not cover just, hey, I got COVID-19. I think it may have happened during an FYSA sanctioned event and I want you to pay my medical bill. It does not cover it in that same way. So it's very clear, you need to, you know, make sure that no one is submitting those claims to our office because they will be denied. There is no coverage for that. And just a final note, right? Like everything else, as you use it, they take it away. So you can expect, right? There hasn't been a pandemic in over 100 years at this scale. And so while those policies currently include things like that, they likely will not in the future. And that's not a result of any claims. That's just a result of, you know, insurance companies don't cover things that they don't have to because they are there to make a profit.
Yeah, just to echo what Eric said, just I really want to reaffirm to everybody that top point that during our mandated suspension of play, until Phase 3 starts in the state of Florida, none of our insurance policies are applicable right now. Going back to what Eric said about the liability, though, in the case that a suit could be brought forward, the board put a lot of consideration into the liability of when we return to play because that's when those lawsuits could potentially come forward is in those first couple of weeks of play. So that influenced a lot of the decision-making that the board made, but was to ensure that we were compliant with the, all laws that we saw out there. So just as that last point, I've had multiple, multiple conference calls with our insurance providers, our broker. I have a lot of information on this, so please direct any specific questions. Because as we all know, with insurance, it's rarely cut and dry. So I may be able to answer some more specific questions, but this was a good general overview that I hope all the members, what will take to heart as they're evaluating their own potential return to play decisions.
Hey, Joel.
Yes.
The, I know we've talked about it and I know that there's guidance coming from various places. Can you touch on, you know, what we're doing to prepare, to give clubs guidance regarding return to play when they do, are allowed to take the field?
Yeah, absolutely. We will have recommendations for FYSA return to play guidelines. The board hasn't quite tackled those yet. As a staff, we're starting to put together the type of information that will be helpful to you guys. There have been things thrown out about sanitizing the balls after every use, eliminating the handshakes, not allowing trainings of more than 10 people. That's when we're talking about that two-week gap where you're not allowed to return to full play. These are examples of what other state associations and other sports are implementing. We have received so much information. Credit to our board for being very proactive out there about looking at what other sports are doing. We've seen things from rugby to lacrosse to football. And we're sort of just aggregating all of that information. We'll make a presentation to the board by this month. Conserv, or best case scenario, we can kind of start that two-week span sometime in June. So I'm committed to getting that information out at least a couple of weeks to our members of return to play, best practices, I would call it, at least a couple of weeks before it goes out. So it's in work right now. We're really just gathering as much information as we can and seeing what we, what will work best for our members here in Florida.
Thank you, Joel. Okay, so what's next? Some have asked about the annual general meeting. It is currently scheduled for the August 7th through 9th. It would be, it is scheduled at the JW Marriott Grand Lakes Orlando. We have, the other night, we authorized a special committee made up of, I think it's four, three or four board members and two staff members to really evaluate our options. We have already, already put in place with the hotel, we've already given them notice that, you know, there's a possibility we won't be able to go through with our, with the AGM onsite. But that decision doesn't have to be made and we don't have, we're not on the hook until early June. But we don't want to wait that, truly don't want to wait that long. By May 30th, we will have a plan that will be presented to the board and we will then communicate that out. There are, there are way too many options for me to get into them tonight. Just know that, you know, we're looking at everything and we will communicate it as soon as we know. We'll change proposals. They're due May 11th. That is five days from now. So if there's, if there are some FYSA rules or bylaws that you believe need to change, I encourage you to go to the website, click on the AGM link. And there is a rule change amendment form. It's electronic. There's a link there right under the AGM, on the AGM page. Click on it, fill it out. It looks just like those in the past. You tell us what rule you want to change, what it says now, what you wanted to say and what your justification is. Once those are collected, they will be sent to the Rules Committee for review. Rules Committee will seek, if necessary, to reconcile similar rule changes. Working with the proposer of the amendments. And then they will make recommendations on those specific changes. And then 30 days, no, not, no later than 30 days prior to the AGM, the Rules Committee will publish those for the membership to review and evaluate. And then finally, this year, as every year, this is an election year, of course, and some nominations are available on the website as well. And so all that's happening. Regionally, annual general meetings, you know, we, we always usually have, well, we always have these spread between June and July. And it's an opportunity for the members in that region to come together to not only, to hear from FYSA leaders, but also to, you know, conduct regional commissioner elections. uh, but also to, you know, conduct, uh, regional commissioner elections and just, you know, generally, you know, work, get together and, and talk about soccer and, and the organization of. Uh, this year, um, the regional annual meetings will not be in-person events. Uh, all regional vice presidents have agreed that they will do virtual, um, regional AGMs. Uh, it's not, uh, it's not optimal, uh, but it is, uh, a way that we can still connect with our regional members uh, and, and, uh, not, uh, just cancel them altogether. Uh, dates are going to be developed. The regional vice presidents are working on, uh, a proposal that they will bring to the board. Uh, we have a May 19th, uh, conference call. I hope that we'll have that, um, that, those details finalized and we'll be able to share that with the membership, um, sooner than later. Huh. So we've, we've shared a lot, um, tonight. I'm going to go ahead and, um, first of all, I want to say not only thank you to you guys that joined, but also a, a, a big thank you to both Joel and Eric. Um, I, I think the number of emails we've exchanged and text messages we've exchanged in the last, uh, last five or last week, uh, has their, I, I, I couldn't count them right now. Um, we, we are, we are putting in a lot of time to try to make sure that we button this thing up, uh, as best we can. We don't have perfect answers. Uh, and Joel, while I'm talking, if you would jump back to the slide that talks about the return to play, um, if you would, that's, that's a hot topic on the comments, uh, the chat section. Um, but, you know, thank you to both Eric and Joel, and Joel's doing, you know, a great job. I, I don't know if you guys, um, can imagine starting a job in January. Uh, first of all, being, you know, told, hey, by the way, insurance, uh, is, is an issue. We need to deal with risk management. And then COVID comes along. So he has had a, an extremely interesting first five months. Um, I hope that once we're through this, that we get a bit of, uh, calm seas, uh, so that he's able to, uh, really get himself, uh, into the role. He had desired to get out and meet, uh, as many clubs as possible over the first 90 to 120 days. He wasn't able to accomplish that. Um, COVID-19 certainly, uh, put that, uh, out of reach for him. Um, but I know he, he stands ready to, you know, have conversations with anybody. Uh, he is, uh, he is the best person to contact. If you have questions, um, please feel free to go to him. Um, so this is the slide that has been asked for a couple of different times. Uh, just to reiterate for those that came in late, uh, our, our return to play will, uh, be triggered by the, uh, move to phase three as ordered by Governor DeSantis. Um, on the date that phase three is effective, there will be a two-week period in which only practices are permitted. Uh, beyond that, uh, there will be no games and no other sanctioned activity. Two weeks from the start of phase three, uh, organizations will be allowed to start offering games, conduct tryouts and do everything that they're, that they would normally do. Um, there's a couple of questions. One question came up, um, in the chat box about when's the last day to play games? So it's a bit interesting, right? Our rules, um, sometimes they, they are very clear. Other times they're a little bit muddled. In this case, the seasonal year technically doesn't end until August 31. That's our, our seasonal year is September 1st to August 31. Insurance, however, renews on August 1st. Registrations are effective August 1st. So, um, Mike Hyatt, I'm gonna, I'm gonna just, I'm gonna put a date out there and then I will, if, if I, I'll take it back to the board and if I find out something different, we'll certainly correct this, uh, before we start to play any games. But I, I think prac, for all practical purposes, July 31 is the last time to play under the rosters for this year. Uh, I think by that point, the date that, that very next day, all the rosters reset to 2020 slash 21 rosters. And so, uh, I think that is the practical date is July 31. Um, and again, if I, if my board members and experts correct me, we would certain to circle back with the whole group. Um, first que, go ahead, Joel. Was that so? Okay. Um, first question we have, uh, so you keep saying about money. Uh, this is, uh, I think it's Joe, um, Jose, uh, about awards and gifts. Uh, where are those awards and gifts? Um, so, and are they going to be able to use, be able to use for next year? It's actually a mixed bag. Um, the costs aren't just, you know, awards and gifts. There's, there's, you know, just the time the staff spent planning the events, the, you know, having to, to secure sites because everything was expected to go forward, especially President's Cup. We actually had events and so we had costs, travel costs, staffing costs that went into that. Um, some of what we purchased this year will certainly, you know, hopefully we can use some of it. I think some of the awards actually have dates written on them. So, you know, unless, I think unless members were happy getting a 2020, uh, 2020, um, champion's medal for their 2021 state cup or president's cup, we probably can't reuse that kind of stuff. Um, so there's, there's a lot that goes into that, um, that calculation. It's not just, you know, uh, stuff that we can simply reuse. Um, Dave, uh, with Braden River asked how many wrecking competitive players we have. I posted in the chat box this year, uh, as of to, as of last week, I think, which I don't believe we've gotten anymore, given the shutdown. Uh, rec, we had 46,008, 45 competitive, 47,383. Tops players, 1,041 for a total of 95,269. Um, last year we registered a total of around 103,000 players. Um, with the spring season and the, the registrations, we did not get this, this spring. I, I think we could have, could have gotten to 100,000, maybe 101. Um, so not too far off from last year's numbers. Uh, however, I truly, unless everything gets back on the field and we have a lot of players, uh, in the, that want to play some summer soccer, unless those registrations come in, we probably won't, won't go much higher than what we're at today. Uh, and these sub, these numbers are not verified. They're not final. It just happens to be the op, the numbers we're operating off of. So I want to make sure y'all are aware. Um, Jose also asked about, um, how many clubs have had claims against them? I, I'll be honest, it's more than one. It's less than 20, but I, I'm not comfortable going into details uh, or even going much further into the discussion on these things. Uh, they are sensitive matters. I, I simply, I will not address, uh, specific clubs, um, and just, I, I can say with certainty, it is not a single club. There are multiples and, um, you know, we have seen an increase. I think it's an, an important thing to, to realize too. I actually was looking through some old, an e, an old email from last year. Our cla, our, um, rate history with our insurance, uh, back in 2009 was in, was around $5 a player. It had floated down to around $4.20 a player. It was, you know, a little bit of adjustment here and there. In my time with FYSA, uh, this is the, the, the largest increase that we've seen. This is also a period of time in which we have seen the greatest number of claims filed. Um, especially on the general liability side, guys. Um, we have to, we collectively have to clean up, um, any area where we may be lax in our registrations. If you, you or, or you know of a club, anybody who is, is somehow just, you know, deciding to, hey, it's okay to not register that, that coach or that manager for some reason, if they think that's okay, they, it's not okay. Um, every, every opportunity that folks have to slip through our, our net, um, with our risk management, it opens us up to, to liability. And as we've seen, uh, one, the action of a, of a small group of people can have a massive impact on the larger organization. It's not lost on us that we have to do everything we can to educate you. We, um, we are doing that through Presidium. Presidium is going to not only tell us where we have holes in our review process, they're also going to assist us with designing policies that we can then ask you to follow. And it's not because we want to be, you know, put some onerous burden on you. It truly is to protect the entirety of, of this organization, all 220-plus clubs. Um, it is, it is our desire that these things that we're putting in place uh, will, um, sway the, the insurance companies to not raise fees to the extent that they've estimated. Um, but it is, it is certainly a possibility and, and so we want to do everything we can to get ahead of it. And to Joel's credit, he's been communicating with them on, on a, a frequent basis to try to make sure they know everything we're doing. Uh, Graham, we've, we've posted that back up. Julie, uh, mask while playing, uh, SCP, we, we don't know. Um, and that will be, there'll be more to come on that as we get guidance from both USU Soccer and as we synthesize information from various sources. Um, so more to come on that. Eric Vasquez, are we taking into consideration different counties that have extended closure? Um, we, we have, um, Eric, and our challenge is that, um, if one or if we, if we were to wait for every organ, every county to decide it was okay to return to play to, and held everybody back, um, on one side, it isn't fair to the, to the club that is affected by the, the extended shutdown within their county. But it's, it's probably frankly more unfair to impose that same restriction on the other 220 clubs. Uh, it's not an easy question or an answer. I, I don't, I do not like it one bit, uh, that we don't have a single person, say the governor, giving an up or down, um, guidance on this. He is simply going to say when phase three starts and that will be the date that we go, that we get started. Now, we did say a majority of counties. So in the unlikely event that he were to say, hey, only 30 of 67 counties can be in phase three, then we haven't met that, that threshold. We have not met the majority of. So today it's 64 out of 67. Um, I suspect that those 64 counties will stay on the same timeline and that some counties, uh, locally, regardless of the governor's guidance, may say you can't play. Um, but there is no way honestly for, for FYSA to be able to, uh, address that short of requiring that there be 100% access before anybody can play. And, um, I, I, I don't believe that's, um, that's prudent, nor do I think it would be, um, uh, be acceptable by a majority of our membership. Do we have guidance on the change in waivers, release of liability? Um, we don't. We know that, uh, insurance, uh, provider, the insurance company, when they do the quote, they will propose amendments to our coverage and will know more than probably what 30 to 60 days before August 1st. Uh, we'll communicate those changes.
I, I think what they mean is the releases that players sign at the beginning, like about if you get hurt and things like that. Um, but I think your answer still holds. I think our answer is no, that's something that you should seek legal counsel on. Um, and, and really to be honest, the best way to protect yourself is just to take all reasonable precautions than a prudent person would and to follow the guidance of the government.
Um, Danny Purnat, yes, um, players would stay their same age until August 1st. So if they're U-15 this, uh, today, they would be U-15 until, uh, up and until July 31st. Uh, they would become U-16 on August 1st. Um, does FYSA have event insurance for their events? Um, so Olaf, it's interesting. When you say event insurance, usually that is about, I'm, I'm, are you going, talking about cancellation insurance? Because if you are, I, I can say categorically, we do not purchase, um, insurance to cover in the event of cancellation, uh, to protect ourselves from, uh, these types of, of scenarios. Um, in the 40, what, 44 years, 45 years of FYSA, I think this probably, I can safely say this is the first time that we've had to cancel entire cups. As a result, we always have rain dates. We always get these games in. So this is a first and I, I don't think anybody could in, with, uh, with a straight face say that they, we could have predicted that we needed to pay for insurance. Uh, so no, we don't. Um, can you make these slides available at the presentation? Yes, Tony, we will, along with the, um, a recorded version of this, um, of this whole, of the, the meeting. What are we doing about the 2 to 20 that are costing us increased insurance costs? Um, well, it, it's not the clubs costing us. It's the, it's the actions of the individuals. And so if an individual, um, is subject to a SafeSport complaint, for example, we have guidelines. We suspend them immediately. Um, if there's actions that they take that, um, need to be dis, uh, have further discipline, expulsion, um, susp, further suspension, what have you, that's, that's what we do. Um, clubs do not, we do not sanction individual clubs for the actions of their members. Now, that said, that's, that doesn't preclude, you know, fully preclude that from, uh, us from taking some action. But I, I think that's, that goes to some questions and some conversations around, um, you know, what is club culture? What, what is, what did the club know? Did they, you know, was it, did they do, did they do something that made them liable? Um, we will be, the guidelines we're going to be coming out with and new policies and stuff, we're going to be expecting people to comply. If you don't comply with our policies, there will be consequences. Uh, so it will be more related to your ability as a club to put into place those required, uh, processes and those required, uh, policies that we ask you to put in to protect the whole, right? Um, Danny.
John, if, oh, go ahead, Joel.
I'm gonna, both of you, yes, please.
To buddy onto that, that, that's a lot of what we're going to be working with, uh, Presidium on is, is, is a challenge of ours and a challenge of any large association is getting information, filtering it down to the ultimate, uh, the, the, the person who truly needs it. Um, at times we, we're a bit disconnected from players and individual coaches and our conduit is the club. I, I think that we have some room for improvement on conveying our messages to the club to reach to the ultimate coach. So we're, we're tackling issues like that via policy, via our partnership with Presidium, uh, via the trainings that, that we're all forced to do and, and that ensuring compliance with it. It's all part of the larger risk management, um, package that, um, we're, we're going to be, uh, rolling out that, that we're going to be looking to improve.
Eric?
Yeah. And I was going to say something similar to Joel, right? Is Presidium is what we're doing immediately, right? We, we enacted that in April. And aside from that, we've enacted the SafeSport training that's mandatory for every adult, um, that has to pass a background check. Um, and, uh, as John mentioned, right? So if there's clubs that are not following those SafeSport guidelines, um, for instance, you know about an instance of sexual abuse against a child and you don't report it, yes, we would then do something about the club, right? But if the club is doing everything we're asking them to, they promptly report upon knowing about it, you don't necessarily want to punish every member of the club for, you know, a, a, a single person's action. Um, and I would also add that last year we adopted a, a sexual harassment and abuse policy, um, that is out on our website. So we've done several things to try to address that behavior and it's going to get more and more aggressive, right? So under the SafeSport policies and things, there's certain policies that may, um, already exist that say, for instance, if you're a coach, you cannot have any child that's, uh, a, a part of that club in your vehicle unless they are your child, right? So any player on your team, if you're caught doing that, you will be absolutely suspended. It doesn't matter if there's no allegation of abuse and absolutely nothing happened. Just the mere fact of you putting yourself and a child in a situation where something could have happened will be a punishable behavior. And that is how we're going to start rooting these things out. We're going to punish any situation where you put yourself in a one-on-one situation with a player where there is potential for abuse. And there will be absolutely no sympathy for the fact that nothing occurred. If you put yourself and a player at risk by having a one-on-one interaction that cannot be interrupted and observed by others, which are the guidelines by SafeSport, you will absolutely be punished and severely.
So moving to the next question, uh, Danny, uh, Purnat, uh, mentions a rumor about clubs being on separate insurance. Uh, we are working with our insurance provider to have coverage for all members of FYSA. That is our, our stated goal and, uh, and for now, that, what you're mentioning is simply a rumor. Um, Graham, copy of PowerPoint, what, later today, probably tomorrow, Joel?
Yeah, first thing tomorrow.
Okay. Um, thank you. Uh, what is the board doing about clubs that are violating F bylaws and costs? So same question. Um, Tom, if you're aware of people violating bylaws, uh, you, you have the authority or the, the, I guess the privilege, the, maybe the duty even, uh, to file those charges. Um, we don't know about it. We certainly can't take action on it, but we do have processes that need to be followed. Uh, South Florida will see a long wait for phase three and when it's authorized. Uh, so I totally agree.
I just want to go back to one, one comment that Tom made, right? About his questions where he says, what is the board doing, not us members? I think we should all remember when we're talking about the major driver of these insurance increases, it's sexual assault of minors, of children, right? And aside from insurance, it's a, it's a much more serious issue, right? So if those allegations are true and those people are being sexually assaulted at a young age, it essentially ruins their entire life, right? They will absolutely never be the same. So I, I think the question to say that it's about only what the board is doing, um, doesn't truly understand the problem with, that we're dealing with. And 19 people or 11 staff members at a state office cannot be on every single field, right? And 19 people or 11 staff members at a state office cannot be on every single field, right? And so we actually, we need the help of our members and it has to be a collective effort because you guys are the ones that are out on your field Saturday and you're the ones that are going to know if, hey, some coach is violating the rules and going into the restroom with players or something like that, right? We can't see that sort of activity. So it, it's really not just about what the board is doing. We can put guidelines in, but we need all of your help to make this happen. And, and truthfully, if we have even a single member club that's not willing to help, as we've seen by this, just a few actions can cause a significant increase as far as financial costs. But really the cost to a kid's life and what it's going to be like literally for the next 60 or 80 years that they're alive, right? They have to live with that. And so if the members aren't willing to help us, we will never see a reduction in cost. And it has to be a collective effort of every single member, every single parent and every single coach. And that's why we have the SafeSport training, to try to show you what are the signs that you need to be aware of, right? This type of behavior usually happens leading up to these sorts of things so that you can recognize it and help us. But it, it truly is not about the board. It's about all of us really as human beings and hopefully COVID-19 has shown us, you know, how we need to come together as humans and, and really protect children. Costs aside, we don't want these things to happen to any child. And so I think every member, including the board, which is very committed, we all need to be doing this, right? And if there's a single one of us that's not, then you should probably just not re-affiliate next year.
Thanks, Eric. So Lee Levinberg, you, you reiterate the concern about the disparity for some clubs that are, may not be allowed to return as, along with everyone else. We share your concern. We, we debated it. We really feel like the best thing we can do is, is allow the majority of clubs to return when they're, when they're able to, based on the phase three start. I, I would encourage you to, to direct your questions to, and, and petition your local authorities to open up, you know, sooner than later, if at all possible. But as a state organization, we, we certainly would not be right for, for me to hold back teams in, in Tampa, Orlando, Jacksonville, because South Florida or one, or one locale in South Florida decides they want to wait until September, October. I think you, I think you would agree that that would be an impractical application. Admin, I'm not sure what you're saying about cups and what, why teams wouldn't be able to move up. They certainly can, they're eight, they will advance in age. If you're saying that by winning the cup that they would then, if they won President's Cup, they'd move to State Cup. There's no, there's nothing that limits a team from, from applying for State Cup. As long as they get their league games, they can play in State Cup. So we do not artificially require teams to perform at a certain level in, in the state or President's or Commissioner's Cup, and we don't use that as a criteria for next year. Olaf? It's fair to assume there will be another player fee increase. That will be a decision for next, next April. I'm sure the discussion will be had by that, the board to determine what's going to happen with fees for next year. We are, in a way, we're doing, we're, we're sort of recapturing what happened, but that's the information that we have available to us. And so I think that's a fair assumption that there will probably be another fee increase. But we're going to work very hard to mitigate that as best we can. About clubs not registering all their kids with FYSA. There is no requirement, Tom, to register all players with FYSA. The requirement is that they be registered with the Federation. And so as long as you can be a club and you literally can register some players with AYSO, some with FYSA, some with US Club, some with USSA, as long as all players are registered with the Federation through one of the Federation members, the organization members, then you are in compliance with Federation bylaws. FYSA, years ago, there was a, I believe there was a lawsuit when organizations like FYSA, in the early 2000s, I think it was, about the time US Club came along, they tried. They said, hey, no, you have to register 100% of your players with FYSA or you can't be a member. The Federation nixed that. They passed policy 212, I believe it was, Joel? Shake your head, yeah, 212, I think it is. And basically they said, you can't require 100% register with your organization. You can require that they register with your organization in order to participate in your programs. So a, a US Club team cannot apply to State Cup. Just as a US Club, or a, a US, or an FYSA team can't apply to US Clubs' state competition or US Club leagues. Leagues are different. Tournaments were also adjudicated by the Federation. If there is an unrestricted tournament, that tournament is open to all Federation members, but you have to be a Federation member. So that's kind of that, that deal. So we do not have a bylaw that says 100% must be registered with us. We do require they be registered with all Federation, with a Federation member. If you are aware that someone is not, then again, there are mechanisms and processes for you to file and bring that to our attention. Tom, to clarify, what is FYSA board doing, not us as members? I think that's been addressed. Player in one county that is in phase three and lives in a county that is in phase two? Julie, I think it's based on where the club's home fields are. If the club is allowed to do it, I don't think anybody's checking addresses at that, at that park. I would refer, however, you to your local authorities. They may have some restrictions around that, but that is not an FYSA issue. Why didn't we cancel cups sooner? Frankly, Admin, we, we, we hoped to get kids back on the field and, and we, you know, this stuff's been changing as you, you've been watching the news, same as us. We, we had, we were hoping for the best, but we've been, as you can see, tonight's refunds and, and our processes, these things took some time for us to put into place. So we have been thinking about what it looks like to cancel for quite some time. We did not feel that it was appropriate to make the decision until last evening. And why did DA close business? We have no idea. That's a Federation deal. For clarity, on May 18th, can we reach out and have players outside our club commit? Yes, you can. Will there be a surprise bylaw? No, Tom, there won't be surprises. Rule changes are required to be submitted by May 11th. Last year, we submitted as a board, we submitted the entire rule rewrite prior to May 11th. We actually submitted to the Rules Committee in time. So this year, if there's nothing submitted to the Rules Committee by May 11th, there will be no August surprise, if you will. So rest assured that we're, we are going to follow timelines just as we did last year. May unemployed coaches are interviewed and offered jobs now if their club is no longer paying them. So coaches can be contacted as early as March 1st. That's in the rules. We've, we've had that, that rule in there for a couple of years. So, so the answer Seth is unemployed or otherwise, they're permitted to talk to new clubs after March 1. Where's individuals that have been suspended by leagues? I did, I don't know. Joel, can you take that one offline perhaps and follow up?
Yeah, definitely.
Thank you.
Yeah, I mean, touching on risk management issues there, that's all obviously handled in Guts Soccer. The, the club who would try to register somebody, they'd show up as denied in, in there. They, they wouldn't be able to roster them.
So Brian Hernandez asks if US Club goes back to play before our timeline and their member clubs start holding tryouts, don't you think more clubs will go back under them? I do think that that is a slight risk, Brian. But if the CDC and the govern- governor's phased approach is saying that it's not safe for teams to be back on the field and US Club chooses to put clubs and players at risk, then frankly, shame on them. Other than the insurance risk management issue, can you clarify if there's a stated sanction that a club would receive if the club held practices or tryouts prior to the state of return to play? I cannot, Bill. It, it would, it's going to have, it would actually, I'm going to have to defer that. We don't, I don't know. I hope that people will, will abide by the guidelines and by the mandate. If someone does not, they're subject to their neighbor bringing charges against them or citing, or bringing it to our attention and, and we will have to take, take it into consideration and, and make a decision, probably refer it to the Review and Discipline Committee, quite frankly. Yes, Joel?
Obviously, this is outside of, of regular rule violations. So there's not going to be anything that we can point to within the rules and regulations that would show how long of a suspension or how long of a sanction that that might be there. But, but again, I would go back to what we talked about on the insurance issue that, 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 that club, if they do ignore our mandate, our mandated suspension, they're putting themselves and the players at a great risk. Our, our insurance will not apply basically until we, we meet, we enter phase three as we've outlined here. So it, it's, they, they would be taking a larger risk than most likely what we could sanction them with.
Mike Andrews, thank you for your comment. Your regional vice president, your regional commissioners are absolutely a great person to connect with and share your thoughts. We are having, the next board conference call is May 19th. We will have a board meeting on May 30th and I'll just, more breaking, one thing I will mention is the board also agreed last night that the May 30th meeting will be a Saturday morning. We will be, we are working on a solution to be able to stream that live on Facebook. So we're hoping to, to allow for the membership to get a peek behind the curtain, if you will, and, and see, you know, some of the things we're talking about and dealing with. So more to come on that. Tom? It's belaboring the, the point, Tom. I, I don't want to continue down that path right now, man. I hear what you're saying. Again, if you have issues, if you have concerns, if you have, if you have charges you want to file, please, you know, avail yourself of the process. Thank you, Mike Hyatt. Tony, thank you. Eric, got you. If Stanford State, we didn't file training at the same levels as if COVID did not occur, they have a case to say they should not have to pay remaining owed fees. That is the, the decision or the, the matter between the club and the player, the player or the fees really is a legal matter. There is the not in good standing section of the Florida, of our FYSA rules that was passed by the membership. Frankly, it, it gives the, the club power in that relationship to hold that player and keep them from registering with another member until whatever financial obligations are satisfied. This is a unique case. And so I would just say, as president, not, this is not an official policy. This is me saying, I would hope that clubs would be understanding that there are circumstances beyond just the fact that somebody doesn't want to pay you. So I hope, and we talked about this a bit earlier today, I hope we won't see a quadrupling or a, a 10 times the number of not in good standings coming into the office between now and May 22nd. I would hope that clubs and, and parents are able to come to terms and, and come up with an agreeable resolution to their, their differences. When do we anticipate to have guidelines for return completed by? Joel, are we thinking by May 30?
Oh, certainly, certainly well before then. I, I would guess in the next week to two. Again, it's really just about working with the board. So you, you could probably call it by the May 19th board meeting at the latest. If we can't get something accomplished by email, it, it's just about gathering all this information. So I would certainly think before May 30th.
Tom, your, the FYSA bylaw 102.13 does say 100% of players. So 100% of players that participate in our programs have to be registered with FYSA. The Federation, go look at bylaw two, or not by law, policy 212. Federation policy 212 will clearly states that we're not allowed to require 100% of players to be registered with us. Organizations, clubs can mix and match their registrations with various Federation members. Player got red carded, all the suspensions carry over to next season? Yes, because they haven't served those games. US Club Soccer is being responsible as FYSA, as FYSA in the management of this crisis? Is that, I'm thinking that's a statement one. I, I refer, I defer to, I don't know. If US Club Soccer tells people they can be back on the field before phase three, I personally don't think that's the responsible approach. But if you believe that they're being responsible, by all means, that is your, that, that's your opinion. Point being, what if club followed social distance guidelines? That was allowed by city government to hold practice prior to phase three and had insurance that does cover them? Bill, if people take, if you take the field before phase three starts, it, FYSA insurance will not apply. That includes any, any claims that arise as a result of injury or any claims that result, arise from the general liability. The challenge you have with having your own insurance to cover you in that case is the, frankly, the, the, the good attorneys won't see it that way. They're going to name us, they're going to name your club, and because our policy is even out there, we're going to get sucked into that. I would, I would ask, I would, well, we are mandating that no play can, no practices, nothing can occur on fields until at least the start of phase three. Currently looking to be potentially June 1st. It may be earlier. If, if Governor DeSantis comes out tomorrow and says, we're going to do a week at a time, it may, we may be able to open the, open things up earlier than, sooner than later. That would be a refreshing change from his current approach, but he is, he's doing what he has to do. We have four minutes left and I'm going to continue to read these guys. Tournaments can play over the summer. Tournament can, they can apply to, to host tournaments over the summer, yes. Winners tryouts, 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 tryouts. Tryouts can be no sooner than 14, 14 days or two weeks after the start of phase three, Admin. When did rec players go up by more than 30% in three years and comp less than 15%? Aren't most of the claims from the comp members? Well, one of those dollars, first of all, the net cost, Tom, to your point, we do, we have FYSA bucks still in effect and I expect that the, that the board will continue to have FYSA bucks. It's my hope that they will. So we give back $2 of the, of the fee. But we, we weighed and balanced everything out from a raw dollar standpoint. They're going up $4, your rec is going up 3. We, we did not look at it on a percentage basis. Phase three is June 1st. We hope phase three is June 1st. We're not entirely sure. That is, the, the phases are set up in two weeks, 14-day segments. And so right now, we're in phase one. May 18th would start phase two if all goes to plan. June 1st would start phase three. Pay attention to the governor's actions. If the governor comes out with a, with a change in the cadence of those phases, we will abide and follow his lead. It is a statement. They are not regarding any safety procedures, point, fair enough, one, to regard. But I'm going to go ahead and go there and I'm just going to say this, Eric, Joel, apologize in advance. But if you are a US Club member, I, I would challenge you to ask your US Club representative and why or whether or not they run background checks on coaches every single year and whether they actually pull the FDLE Level 1 background check as required by Florida statute. I can assure you that Florida State, the Florida U-Soccer Association absolutely pulls that, that background check and it gets pulled by, by our risk management company, JDP. It costs $24 per year just for the FDLE check. The other $9 is paid for administrative support from our, our risk management and then there's a portion that is, does go toward administrative costs within the office. Now, it is my understanding, and I'm not an expert on US Club, but they apparently only require coaches to register every two years and they only do background checks and I think they charge $25. And I don't believe they do it every year. So I'm just going to say, it appears that right now, your statement of them ignoring safety procedures or what have you, I don't believe that they're doing a proper job on the background checks as required by Florida statute. Not talking about in general, I'm just talking about that they're not, that there are people that are on the field that may not be vetted to the extent that Florida U-Soccer does it. And I stand by our risk management program over US Club any day. Sorry, I got a little animated there, but it struck a nerve. Rec players, three, six to eight week season, comp player. Tom, I, I hear you, man. The fees are what they are right now. They are what they are, they're not changing. We're not going to reevaluate again.
The six, the six to eight weeks is what the league determines that they're going to play. Our insurance covers them the full year regardless of how much they're on the field.
Exactly my thought, Joel, right? You could have as long of a season as you please. It's, FYSA doesn't mandate how short it has to be.
So, yeah, and thank you guys both. Hey, it's, it is seven, but I'm going to, I'll stay, you know, Eric, Joel, you're free to, to leave if you want, but I'm going to answer these questions until we're done. It's only 7 o'clock my time, so I'm, I have a little more luxury here. Uh, it's only 7 o'clock my time, so I'm, I have a little more luxury here. Um, let's say phase one is not till September. Pay, I'm sorry, phase three, um, then tryouts, uh, and that changes everything, right? September becomes, it is certainly problematic. Um, but we, if phase three starts in September, then players will not be able to practice until September. And we will have to deal with, we will certainly have to make some additional decisions around, um, our calendar if that were to happen. What is state cup tournament dates in the fall? Everything is, um, should be, all the dates should be on the website, uh, for the, the, the upcoming season. Um, what date does risk management finish off for 2019-20? We are going to flip the switch on July 1st, Julie. Uh, technically, our seasonal year does run till August 31. Uh, but for, so 2019-20, um, risk management would go till August 31st. Um, but we will flip the switch on July 1st so that, uh, those that, uh, are gonna be, you know, coaching or volunteering for next seasonal year would be able to get their background check done. Uh, thank you, Joe, for the, for the kind words. Um, thanks for clarifying. Bill, they're mandating that, uh-oh, Bill, I've lost, I'm losing you. Hold on. Let's see, just clarify, you're mandating the club will be in violation of FYSA's new mandate policy with sanctions if a club starts back early regardless if they do not have, in fact, have other insurance allowed by county. Please just to make sure that all clubs follow, no exceptions. I will say, I think it's safe for me to say that there, there, there will be consequences, but I'm not able to articulate what those, exactly what those consequences would be. Uh, Bill, I'll, I'll take that back to the board, uh, and we, when we meet again on May 19th, we certainly can, um, can, can have that conversation and perhaps give some additional guidance so that, uh, there's clarity. What I don't want to do is tell somebody there's a $500 fine and them decide that they just want, they're willing to pay the fine. Um, so I think we have to give it some thought. Uh, all those crazy times, as they say, thanks, thanks, oh, Dara, thanks, Dara. Um, what's the difference between cups? Oh goodness, state cup is the highest level, president's cup's the second tier, uh, competition, uh, for those teams that, uh, um, still want to do a national competition, but, uh, don't feel that they're, um, the top, uh, team in the, in their age group. Uh, both state and national, or state and president's cup go on to both regional and national competitions. Commissioners' Cup is a regional event, uh, this year. Uh, it is, uh, for, for those, uh, competitive teams that, again, don't believe that they're ready to play at those, uh, the sec- top in the, the second tier, but are wanting to still compete at the local level. Um. Let's see, what's the difference between state presence, um, and futures? Well, futures was, uh, our elevens and twelves, it was a step above commissioners, uh, but we, we weren't offering elevens and twelves in president's cup anymore. So we, we set up a separate competition, but futures will not exist, uh, for next year. Can teams play in all of them? No, they cannot, admin. It's, you, you commit to a cup and you play that cup. Cannot play multiples. Um. Stay safe, seriously, admin. Okay, sorry, I'm just reading now. John, Joel, thanks for having us in public. Um. So Tom, yeah, we're, we're, give, let us, we're gonna take baby steps on this, uh, opening up to public. Uh, we are doing our best, uh, we wanna, we wanna be more, uh, we've tried to be more transparent, we wanna be more transparent, we wanna communicate. That's what these town halls are about, so more to come. Futures won't exist because, um, I mean, honestly, uh, the, the competition committee, uh, decided not to, that futures, um, league and futures cup did not, uh, was not something that FYSA should be doing. Uh, and in, and in part that the, uh, membership, uh, majority of the membership at the AGM last year expressed a dissatisfaction with a competition for elevens and twelves, um, that provided for competition. They felt like that that should not, we should not, as an organization, do that. Uh, we continue, because the plans were in place, we, uh, the board decided to do it for this year, uh, with a, uh, an eye towards potential future. No pun intended, but, uh, that decision has been made, future cup, future league will not exist. Affiliation, reaffllation notice will be sent out on the normal timeline. There will, uh, we, uh, Joel, if you would work with Rosemary on, uh, what are sending out notices?
Absolutely.
And Zoom recordings are free and easy. We, so, um, thanks, Tom. We, one of the challenges that we have when we do our calls now, um, we do not necessarily parse it out between, uh, public portion and executive session. There are things that we cannot discuss publicly, uh, for, for legal reasons. And so, um, our Zoom recordings right now, we do not, uh, we're, we're very, uh, very open with our discussion and very honest in our discussion. I, I think that, uh, we will certainly, again, take into consideration your request and, and, uh, I can, I can promise you, we do plan, the May 30th meeting is going to be public. We will do as, as many as we can do, uh, while balancing, um, the needs of, of the board, uh, and, and our staff. Uh, can we increase referee fees for refs? No, we cannot, that beyond, it's beyond our control. We do charge the same background check fee, the $40 fee, uh, to our refs. That's what we control and we, it's the same for anybody that needs a background check. Um, great, thank you, guys. Uh, referee pay must increase because there's a shortage of referees. Admin, that is a club and league decision. Uh, you decide what you should pay, um, referees, that is not an FYSA decision. Nor does, uh, the Florida State Referee Committee, they do not set fees either. And state tournaments, um, it's, so if we increase, we can increase the, the referee fee, uh, admin. Uh, but keep in mind, the teams, uh, up until the final four, the teams that are playing in those games are the ones paying those fees. Um, we do actually, for, for final four, um, we do not have to pay, we don't pay our referees because they're there being evaluated for inclusion in regional and nationals. And so they're there, they're hand-selected, uh, to be at those events. So, um, we certainly could raise, we could double their fee, uh, their regi- ref- referee fee, uh, but that would come out of the pockets of the teams participating in that game. So it may not be the best. Why not postpone the state cup to July or June? We thought about it, that's why we waited so long, admin. We, we, we really, there were, there was, and I'd, I'll be, I think it's fair to say, there's still a, a few that would like to have held off, um, you know, postpone and kick the can down the road another couple of weeks. I, I think that, uh, we, we felt like that we've gone as far as we can. Our go-no-go date, if we were to try to, to put teams on the field, we'd be number one, putting them at risk because they're coming out of a, a period of a lot, where a lot of kids aren't doing anything. Um, but the, you know, but then we'd be putting them on the field in 95 degree weather with 90% humidity. Um, there's a lot of reasons why, there is a lot of good reasons why and there's a lot of bad reasons. Um, and so we, we talked it all through, guys. We, it was, we had a two hour plus board meeting last night. I think we spent, uh, a significant, the first part of the meeting was really talking about whether even to, to cancel cups. And, uh, it was a lot of back and forth. So this was not a decision we made lightly. If it was an easy decision, we probably would have canceled a month ago. Um, but we did not want to see that happen. Um, I know, Jose, I, I get it. Um, and what I'm hoping to have happen, guys, is that, uh, the leagues will fill that gap. Um, so the leagues aren't required to return to play in July, um, or June-July timeframe, but the leagues will have the option. So if enough members of a league want to get together, uh, your leagues have the ability to sanction those, uh, those games and provide you with an outlet to play the game of soccer. Um, I, it, it is, it is sad, it does make me sad and, and it's regrettable that the, the 19s, um, don't get to continue on and do anything. Um, we talked about maybe having the 18-19s over the summer. Unfortunately, um, thanks, Tom, little, little, little TMI there, sir.
Uh, John, just to add one more thing, um, they, they've talked about adding the U-20 bracket to, um, regionals and nationals for upcoming years. There's nothing official yet, but there has been, uh, talk of it at the, uh, regional and national level. So that there, there may be another opportunity for them. Uh, granted, many of them won't be in high school, but still, it would be more like the, um, the, the older traditional U-19 bracket, a lot, a lot of, uh, a mix of college freshmen and, uh, seniors.
Jose, I hope you don't have to go as far as North Carolina or Virginia. I hope that there's, there'll be local opportunities to play. Um, I, I hope maybe there's a, an, uh, maybe a club wants to host a tournament in your area that could bring those teams together. Um, there's, there are, I, I'm hoping there are ample opportunities for your team to get on the field without having to travel to North Carolina, uh, and, and incur those expenses and incur those risks. Um, that said, um, you know, if you do go, I hope you kick, uh, I hope you, I hope you win all your games and, and beat the North Carolina teams. Um. Is all soccer fields open at the same time? No, uh, admin, uh, only the, it, the local, your local, um, mayor, your, your county administrator, your Parks and Recreation, they will decide when the fields actually open. You cannot, if, if, even if they opened up today, uh, you would not be authorized, at least there'd be, you could not go back to the fields and play and be under our insurance. And as has been discussed, uh, you would be subject to, uh, sanctions by FYSA, uh, for doing so. Wow, should clubs share fields? Uh, if they want to, admin, it's, it certainly is, it would be, in my mind, it would be an acceptable thing if they can come to an agreement. Um. You guys are being beyond great, just don't respond. Uh, we love, come on now, you know, Tom, Tom and I've had our, our, our conversations over the years. It's a, it, it's, it's not a bad thing. He, he's gonna ask his questions and I'm gonna answer, right, Tom? Um, I mean, by the time phase three opens, all clubs fields should be open. Right, Tom? Tom, have I ever avoided your questions entirely?
No, you're a very nice guy.
Okay, thank you. Um, sorry, um. Tom Hanks, come on. How, how about, no, so everybody tells me Woody Harrelson, but that's just what I hear.
The devil has left the building anyway, so it's okay.
What's that?
The devil has left the building.
Ah, okay.
He knows who I'm talking about, he knows who I'm talking about.
I mean, but, but, by the time phase three opens, all clubs fields should be open, right? Admin, I wish that, I knew that to be the case. I don't believe that will be the case. I think there will be some, some, uh, local, um, authorities who will drag it out further. Um, I cannot control for that. I can, uh, uh, really, all I can control for is what the governor, uh, is saying. And we believe phase three is when it's gonna start. Uh, I really wanted you to, guys, we did consider postponing, we just, we, we could no longer, but we can no longer delay the decision that had to be made. Um, we thought long and hard about it. Um, I don't mind saying, it, it kept me up at, uh, some nights thinking about what's the best way to do this, guys. Uh, so admin, and, and by the way, admin, admin, if you would, tell me who you are because you're, you, you know, I, certainly answering your questions, don't mind it. I wouldn't mind knowing the name behind the fa- uh, behind the, the, uh, admin, the, Harry, okay. Uh, Danny, parks are open in Dade County, but with restrictions, organized sports activities are now allowed. Okay, Danny, um, but FYSA sanctioned activity is not allowed until, uh, beginning of phase three. Oh, not allowed, gotcha, okay. All right, have I gotten ahead of the questions? It's 7:13? I, I'm, I'm not going anywhere, so. What would be the guy, when would the guidelines with physical be available? Pro- I mean, more than likely no later than May 30th, but probably sooner than that. Joel's, Joel and Jared are working hard to, uh, synthesize that information and, and, and be able to put it into a, a format that, that could be, uh, released to the members. All right. We'll give it one more minute. Joel, Eric, you have anything, last comments?
No, nothing for me. Uh, appreciate everyone's time. Uh, we, we, you'll be seeing, uh, more of these in the future as topics come up that, uh, necessitate this kind of forum.
Harry, next season starts August 1st.
And, uh, John, I would just say, uh, a, a big thank you to John, right? So a lot of people think that the president of FYSA is a paid position, is not. He's a volunteer, he has the normal, regular job that he has to go to and still do all of this. And, and frankly, he's probably spent more time on FYSA business than his real job lately. And, uh, so we owe him a, a lot of gratitude and a huge debt and thank you, John.
Thanks.
Question, uh, I just got on here, can tryouts be conducted, uh, via Zoom rather than face-to-face? Absolutely, um, the, uh, starting May 18th, if you want to do, uh, tryouts virtually, uh, please feel free to.
Um, CDL USA is decision made by CDL and USA. Uh, Harry, um, can they start without school opening? Uh, if we're in phase three and we're 14 days beyond phase three, then yes, they can. Um, our, our decision-making is not predicated on whether schools are open or not. All right, it is 7:15 Central, 8:15 Eastern. Thank you, everybody, thank you for the 60 diehards that have stayed to the end. Um, if you have any questions, feel free to, um, send them to myself, to Joel. Uh, Eric, on the financial side, Eric would probably be the great person. Uh, Harry, you absolutely have a lot of questions, I could see that. Um, so, uh, let's take this offline. Harry, uh, if you want to speak to Joel or I, I guess, uh, if you'll send us a text message, uh, my phone number, I'll give it out, 850, I'm gonna put it in the chat box if y'all want it, because. You cannot call me without texting me first, that's all I'm gonna ask, guys. Uh, text or email, let's arrange a time, but that's my cell phone, so a text would be fine. Um, if I get a call from an odd number, I will not answer it. Um, from there, uh, I will be happy to, to arrange a time. Joel also stands ready to, to have conversations during the day. Uh, I am, for those that don't know, I work in healthcare supply chain. Um, you know, I do have a few concerns beyond, uh, soccer, uh, lately. Um, but, uh, again, we'll continue. Thanks, Tom, appreciate it. Yes, uh, John lives in Florida, he lives in Pensacola, Florida. Um.
To, I, I just, just, uh, one last question up there. I, I have communication from Brian about all of this. We'll be going out, uh, to, uh, the clubs via the normal, uh, um, channels tomorrow. We wanted to just have this, uh, opportunity first, so that, that information will be out on everything that was covered tonight.
All right, guys, again, great, great conversation. Uh, thank you for, uh, using the chat box, making it a little easier and not, us not having a bunch of folks trying to talk. Um, I hope you all have a, a safe evening and we, to Joel's point, uh, we'll schedule another one of these when, uh, we're at a point where we feel there's enough content to, uh, to come back and, um, and, and meet with you again. Thanks and have a blessed night.
Take care.